Okay. Good evening, welcome to the Brookfield Board of Selectmen's meeting for August 16th, 2022. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so we are going to start with formal recognition of some of the, one of the longest standing members of our contributing portion of Brookfield's community today. I'd like to take this moment to remind everybody to silence your devices, please. Okay. And I just want to say, this is, this is a recognition that's well deserved. And I'd like to ask Adam to share just a little bit of Chief Martell's experience in service so far to the town.
It's quite lengthy. So tonight, we congratulate Chief Peter Martell on his years of service to the town of Brookfield. In his career, Chief Martell has served in many capacities, including, there are many, Civil Defense Director, 1985, at the age of 18, which was reportedly the youngest in the state at the time. EMS in February of 1986, EMT November 1986, firefighter, February of 1988. Was one of the original members of the Board of Directors of the municipal-run Regional Dispatch Center in 1989, which was eventually taken over by the State Police in 1994. EMS captain since June of 1991. Paramedic since February of 1995, the second paramedic in Brookfield. Has been full-time since July of 1999. He has his Associate's Degree in Fire Science from May of 1993. Has been captain, or was captain, starting in January 1995. Chief since June of 1997. And he is also currently the Emergency Management Director. And as seen throughout the town and by the gathering today, Chief Martell is well-known, well-respected by all those who have interacted with him, as well as those who just know of him. And hear of the name, and hear of the Brookfield Fire and EMS departments. We again congratulate you on your dedication to the town and departments, and wish you many more good years of service to the town.
And just, with this, there's a certificate, as well as a memento for 25 years as chief. Just, and I also just want to thank you, because you've been one of those people who, not just with your involvement, but your willingness to bear forward the history, as well as have some vision for where we need to go to communities. So I just want to thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
Getting, getting some of us new folk on board.
I'm gonna lose the source on that, but I forget where to do it, but what a long, strange trip it's been. It started out simple enough, just wanted to help out. Over the years, all the faces that I'm looking at, and a lot more, that have, have lost a few, gained quite a few. I wouldn't have been able to do this without the people that have served under me, served with me, been there for me, in the field, in this room, everywhere. It's, it's been an honor. Patience all the time, "Oh, when are you retiring? When are you stopping?" I just, that's it. And not really, the newer EMTs will still kind of groan, because they'll show up on, they'll show up on scene without me, or some of the other senior members, "Oh, where are they? Where's Pete? Where's Donna?" Well, there are other people on the squad, it's just, it's part of it's, or it's a double-edged part of working in your hometown, the town you love, is you're serving the people that you know, you're townspeople, but at the same time, as you lose them, it's, it's a bit out of you. But wouldn't trade it for anything. It's, I don't know how much more I've got to go, but here we are, so, thank you. You get to dismiss him.
I get to dismiss him? I did want to thank, actually, all of you for coming out and helping with the recognition, and I think it really, it's this level of support. It's nice to see it for a happy reason. But let me just put it that way, it's really, it's awesome to be able to come out and celebrate as a group, right, and, and recognize the hard work, the service, the contribution. And, and really, the mentorship, right? I mean, like you said, you've been doing this for a long time. There's a number of, there's a number of experienced faces in this group, but there's a number of younger faces in this group that are kind of the future of, of the paramedic and fire service for Brookfield. So thank you for being here, thank you for being part of it. There's not a lot of communities that can claim that, and a lot of that, you know, they, they say people like, they take jobs, but they leave managers, right? We're one of the communities that still has a, has a relatively struck, thriving service with regards to the volunteerism with our firefighters and our paramedics. So, thank you for what you do. And it's up to y'all if you want to watch all the exciting stuff that we will do after this. Okay, so that was the most important announcement we had. We do have a number of other announcements. One of them has to do with the openings that we have on predominantly employment opportunities, as well as committee openings. So let me start with the committee openings. I spoke a little bit about volunteerism, and how we have a very, we do have, relative to other small communities, a relatively strong level of willingness to serve for EMT and fire. One of the areas where we're struggling, like many communities, is for the volunteer staffed committees. Some of those include the Advisory Committee, we have two openings out of the seven positions. For the Cable Advisory Committee, we have two openings as well. Capital Improvement Planning Committee, we have four openings. Conservation Commission, and, and this is really difficult, because we had, we had rebuilt Conservation Commission, and they did a lot of good work, but we are now down to two people on Conservation Commission. And that's one that we really need functioning for, really for us to be able to do the day-to-day business, fundamentally.
As it stands now, we do not have a committee that can act, because we have voted a seven-member committee, and two is not a quorum, we need a minimum of two volunteers before the Conservation Commission can do anything. And so, as it stands, if anybody applies to the town, they have to wait 21 days, because there's no one who has the authority to act, then appeal the non-action to DEP, and wait for DEP, who has then a 90-day turnaround. So, this is, is gonna be detrimental to anyone who is seeking conservation approval of a project, because it's going to be, you know, a very, very long road to get any, any action. So it would be really wonderful if anyone could step up for CONCON.
For CONCON, okay. So, so fundamentally, if we were gonna focus on one particular space, that's the one that we need in order for us to be able to do business. Okay. Counts on the aging, we do have one opening.
Ah. Maybe not, because the wonderful Ms. Mary Lou Knight has offered to be on that committee.
Have you really? Outstanding. So I guess the next meeting, we'll be doing the appointment?
It has been sent to be placed on the agenda, yes, she said it, I ran to the office and put it on the agenda.
Fair enough. Let me know if you want to read 21 pages of, of Wetlands' documentation as well.
Did you give the t-shirt back?
Okay. We've got the Historical Public Records Committee, two openings. Local Public Access Committee, six openings. Quabog Valley Community Development Representative, one. Source Water Protection Committee, seven. And Zoning Board of Appeals, one. And then for employment opportunities, this is, these are paid positions within the town. We've got the All Boards Clerk. The Highway, now, All Boards Clerk is a 15-hour-a-week position, Tuesday through Thursday. Applications are open until the position is filled. And anybody who would be interested in that should submit a letter of interest and resume to the Town Administrator at townadministrator@brookfieldma.us. And the job description is available under Employment Opportunities at brookfieldma.us. We've got a position for a full-time highway worker, that is also open until filled. Those job applications should go to highway@brookfieldma.us, or call 508-867-8357. Again, the job description is on our, under Employment Opportunities on our website. And then we are looking for two full-time police officers. That, those resumes and cover letters, or letters of interest, should go to Chief Blanchard at M. Blanchard at brookfieldma.us, or call 508-867-5570. And we are an equal opportunity affirmative action employer. We assure you that your opportunity for employment with the town will be based only on your merit, without regard to race, religion, sex, age, national origin, or disability, unless there's a explicit physical requirement for the job that can't be accommodated. So, those are our announcements for today. We have the warrants that were signed. The first one was for 71322, for $115.05. An additional warrant was a correction for 71322, for negative $227.20. We have an expense warrant for 72622, for $316,620.24. We have a payroll warrant for 72622, for $204,773.76. Withholding warrant for 72722, for $72,153.61. Expense warrant for 8922, for $127,687.93. A payroll warrant for 81022, for $155,032.41. And then a withholding warrant for 81022, for $27,379.14. And so that's the report on the warrants. And so we're gonna move on to new business, the first being the Senior Center Report from our Citizen Action Committee. Mr. Eaton, would you care to come on up?
If you have the letter, if you go to the second page, I just want to acknowledge publicly the 13 people, Sally Brown, Barbara Clancy, Rudy Heller, Pat King, Mary Lou Knight, Megan Metz, Lois O'Leary, Brenda Parrish, Bill Simpson Jr., Clarence Schneider, Don Taft, and Bernard Turner. They worked diligently over three months during the summer, when it's kind of tough to get people to come to meetings, every week, we had a meeting. And I'm convinced that most of those people on that committee were committed to going forward to the Select Board, making a recommendation, or suggestion, that they put together, appoint a committee, to look at the feasibility of building a senior center at Hayden, Lincoln Street Extension, or some other site. But, most of those people were committed to that, including me. But after that, after those meetings, they investigated 19 sites as possible locations, including Hayden and Height, and the Lincoln Street Extension. And that group visited seven senior centers in the area, had intensive interviews with those senior centers, and found out what programs work best, what's the best business design, what it costs to run a senior center. Very thorough interviews. And after those sessions, they come to the realization, we probably had the cart before the horse. We need to really focus on creating and implementing programs that are adaptable or acceptable to seniors, rather than building a structure. So we also recognize that if we're not gonna build a structure, we need a place to congregate. And one of the, at one of the latter meetings, the Congregational Church offered their site, the basement of the Congregational Church, initially every Tuesday morning, for a site, potentially to expand that. That location can accommodate over 70 people, it has a full functioning kitchen. It won't be disruptive to the Town Hall, where we're trying to do business activities here, where people are walking past seniors having their toenails clipped, or, or doing Tai Chi, or whatever. So, that was a great, and so I'd like to acknowledge the Congregational Church for making that offer. One of the people on the committee documented that we have, at that time, 1,089 seniors in this town, over 60 years old. About a third of our population. They have made a significant financial contribution to this town. You talked about volunteerism before, they've also been a significant part of our volunteer corps. So, I think, briefly summarize, I hope that the Select Board, the Financial Committee, the town will not only give the moral support, but the financial support to the Council on Aging, the new director, as they move forward to trying to create programs for this most deserving segment of our community. If you've got any questions, but I think they did an extraordinary job, I think we made the right suggestion. It's up to you guys to decide what you're gonna do, but, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And by the way, very, very happy to have Mary Lou Knight participating in the Council on Aging. She has been, during these conversations we've had, she has been an asset, as well as Don, too. So they're a good team.
First of all, thank you to you and to everybody who put the effort in. I think we, we gained a lot from making it an independent action committee, and giving you all the freedom to, to go do the work, and come back with a recommendation. And, you know, functionally, what it sounds like, it sounds like we're taking the right steps, just, we have the right vector, just maybe not the right velocity, given how much of the town is seniors, right? So we've gotten by with volunteers in the Council on the Aging for a number of years. We're entering a period where we've just now got our first, you know, director on board. And, and I think it's one of those items, and, and I think we've even had a similar conversation with the folks who are, who are supporting the, the foundation anniversary, is that if we have the content that we know we need to support, then we can plan the budget around the content, right? So, and it's one of those chicken or eggs things, and you're, you've been on the financial committees, so you know, you know, you have to have the plan, in order to then fund the plan. So I think by having the new director, by trying to reinvigorate the, the question of what do the seniors need, and the work that you all did, it, it provides that framework for us to go say, okay, what are those services we need to offer, what's the resources required to offer those services, right? So, and, and I think that this is a good starting point. So what I can commit to is, is fundamentally, so long as, as the director and the Council on the Aging come forward with a plan, and we identify what those resources are that we need, and execute against the plan, then there's no reason for us not to, not to allocate what we need to.
We should.
You know?
Yeah.
So, but we have to start by having the, you know, what does it need to look like? And I really appreciate what the, you know, the fact that the Congregational Church has been a good neighbor, in terms of supporting the community, you know, for, for these type of, like, activities that are just good, being, being good neighbors and being part of the community. So it's, it's awesome that they're willing to, to share that resource with us, so.
Well, you got a good core of people that are interested.
Right.
We should lean on them a little bit, and
Absolutely.
and the Council on Aging, so. But I, I gotta tell you, I was impressed by the group, and I gotta reiterate that, because we had a mindset, that we're gonna build a senior center.
Gonna build it, and they'll come, right?
Yeah, yeah, they, they will come. And we, we did a study in 2017, said, "Let's build one," you know?
Yeah.
But it's not, you gotta have a good program.
Right.
And the data we collected on, on the sighting, the data we collected on what, what's a good senior center do, and what works well, whether it's communications, it's data, data collection, so forth, is invaluable to the people as we move forward with the program. The other thing I'd like to say is, I'd never been in a senior center, believe it or not, before this. I was, quite frankly, impressed and startled about the magnitude of the work that's required. Whether it's financial, whether it's data collection, whether it's working with volunteers, how do you get money from the supporting communities, like the Lions Club, all those things. It's, it's a complex process. So they're gonna, they're gonna, the Council on Aging and the new director's gonna have a challenge. So your support is what they need.
So.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alright, so we have a comprehensive emergency management plan for review today. This is
Not the plan.
Not the plan.
No. The, I believe Peter emailed the plan to you at one point, it's been reviewed, it's a it's an update of the previous emergency management plan, the case and, and different things changed.
Okay.
So, it's just, it's just making it current to meet the state's standards.
Right. Have we scheduled a time to go over the plan with any key players within the community?
The emergency management plan? No, that would, that would be Peter, that would, his Emergency Management Director, that would be his function.
Okay, could you just ask him
Sure.
when, when they're scheduled to review the update with the, at least the department heads, I would think? And then any critical, any critical players in the plan, fundamentally?
Okay, I, I believe this plan is more of an action plan for emergency response in disaster situations?
Right, but some of it, but typically
The department heads, although I'm sure would be interested, I don't see what the tax collector, the assessor, and the treasurer would fundamentally have anything
I was being a little too broad in my term. I was thinking more department heads in terms of fire, highway, police.
It was sent to all of them to review before it was submitted for your signature.
Right.
So, but you want him to meet with them, too?
What I'd kind of like is, is, and it may be part of the plan, and shame on me, because I, I recall getting it, I don't know that I got all the way through it. It's a bias towards the sand table, when you publish a, a document like this, you at least do a, at least a single face-to-face walkthrough with everybody that, that has a role that's within the confines of the organization. Because people can email them, and they can say, "Yeah, I read it, I'm okay with it," but doing even like an hour-long drive run, where we say, "Hey, tornado hits", you know, here's who, here's who's on first, has some value. So I would just, like, if we're adopting it, I would like us to do a, a dry run, fundamentally.
Okay.
So just put it on the calendar, even if it's like, once a quarter, we get together and talk about a different disaster. Or we do it at, even if it's only of mild interest, maybe at the tail end of a department head meeting, we, we keep everybody after class that, that has a role in it, for like 15 or 20 minutes, and we go over one.
I like that idea, because they're a captive audience.
Right, so they're coming anyway, so, so we can, and then anybody who wants to stay, even if they're not, like, even if they, they're not a key player, right? If they know what the plan is, and they have the resources and the capability, a lot of those plans include leveraging, like, knowledgeable volunteers in the community. I'll give you an example, I'm sure our assessor doesn't have a role, but I'm sure if, if the creek started to rise, I think that Al would be there with a truck and a shovel and sandbags, if we asked him to.
He absolutely would, and I don't think we'd even have to ask him, because he would just be there, yeah.
So fundamentally, let's, let's maybe incorporate into the tail end of the department head meetings
Yeah, that's a great idea.
going over a little, little bit of a, a sand table run with it, so. Can I get a motion to adopt that comprehensive emergency management plan?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the comprehensive emergency management plan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And this is where we say that we've reviewed it and acknowledged our, our department's role in it, so. Looks like the, the only signatures on here is us, the Fire Chief, and the Police Chief. I would have expected Highway, because I would expect that there are times when their equipment resources are pretty great.
I think this, this is set up through the state, so the signatures are what the signatures are, but if not, I'll make sure.
Okay, great. Great, so that is, that is at least incorporated there. Next item is possible appointment of Cable Studio Ward Meter, Matthew DeCicero.
So you have Mr. DeCicero's information in your packets?
Yep.
And he is not him.
Or DeCiro, I'm sorry.
DeCiro?
Yep.
Oh, sorry. I, I don't attempt names, I'm not good at that, so I just go with what I hear. He is very qualified for the position. The position's been advertised for a month. He is the only applicant. Fortunately for us, he is extremely qualified. We determined at the Personnel Board meeting, that it was agreed for. We did not set a salary at that time, because we didn't have the chart with us, to figure out where it would fall. But after doing a little bit of review, I'm thinking $24 an hour, that it's between 19 and 26.
Okay.
And if we can bump it up to 26, it will, it will shorten the number of hours available. I don't know how we want to set the hours for this position. If they're a set number of hours, or just work as many hours as you can, until we get caught up, and then level out?
Yeah, I would think that that's what we want to do.
This is what your total hours within the year, within this confines, so we need you to keep track of those, and we'll pay you accordingly.
Right.
Work at your own pace, please get this done within set deadlines, I'm not sure. We don't have a cable committee, so there isn't really a cable committee for this person to report to, so they would be reporting to, to you. Um, and so those are parameters that we need to set and if you're amenable to the hourly rate, if you wanna choose one, we can offer Mr. DeCiro the position. He met with Sharon, he went over the studio with her, um, and he seems to be a good fit.
Okay. Is twenty-four, do we know, is twenty-four in line with what Brookfield is paying?
Um, actually, he didn't say what Brookfield was paying, so I, I have no idea.
Okay. Cause that seems like a, seems like an appropriate level to start at?
Hmm.
Um, I'm not, I'm not really familiar-
I'm not familiar with-
Because no one applies for these positions, it's hard to know.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, cable is not something that is, I believe, going to be around for much longer as reflected in the cable contracts-
Yep.
Where it's based on user fees, so the funding isn't necessary-
But then, but then we're, but then we're gonna have to figure out as a community-
The streaming, you know, aspect and the different technologies, so, so, um-
It's gonna just shift.
Yes.
Responsibilities are essentially gonna shift over to more like, instead of cable coordinator in a way-
It'll be more of a streaming-
Yeah, it's more like, yeah, live streaming coordinator in a sense.
Right.
Yeah. Telecommunications position.
Yeah.
Except without the tele.
Kind of a media, media-
Yeah, media community.
Communications director, yeah.
Media man, media manager.
Well, but anyway, be that as it may, so we need, we need a salary set by you, the board, which will then be presented to the personnel board.
How many hours is it?
Depends on how much you wanna pay him.
Oh, okay. I don't know if there was already a set hour.
We have, no, because we, because there's a lot of, of initial work.
There's a lot of front-
Setting, saying, you know, you're gonna work ten hours a week, then-
Right.
Finding out that in order to catch up, he needs twenty hours a week for the first three months and then it's gonna be seven hours a week after that, you know what I mean? So, I'd rather see it this much time within a year or this much salary within a year at this rate. These are the hours that you have available, use them as appropriate.
Yep.
Right, because town meeting might take up a heck of a lot more time.
Right.
And editing and sending all the YouTube videos, the videos up on YouTube is gonna be very, um, labor-intensive as well.
Especially the upfront part of that.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so it's gonna be loaded on the front end.
So for the, so for the grade, the grade has a range of nineteen to twenty-six?
Correct.
So I think coming in at twenty-four at a starting point, i- given thirteen years of experience and uh, what appears to be his, his, his other credentials, I think that's a, a good recommendation. What do you, what do you think?
Yeah.
So do you wanna make a motion to, um, approve his appointment conditionally at twenty-four dollars an hour with the, pending the approval of the personnel board?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, uh, what is it?
Appoint him.
Uh, to, to appoint, uh, Matthew DeCiro as the cable studio coordinator at a rate of twenty-four dollars an hour pending the, uh, personnel board review.
Second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then, um-
That equates out to approximately eight hundred and thirty-three hours for the fiscal year.
Okay, so that's, that's, um, that actually works out well because that keeps it below the, what is it, like nine hun- eight eighty?
Well, if it was a full year, it would be sixteen hours a week, but we're, we're-
Right.
Gonna be three months in before he starts.
Right.
So, we've got July August and we're going into September. So it, it, it won't exceed the full-time mark.
Right, that's, that's-
But he has a full-time job, which he has every intention of keeping, so I don't anticipate that he will be-
That's a problem, this is a second, second job.
That he will be, um, able to, to devote that kind of time.
Right. Okay, great.
But at least that wiggle room is there, should extra time be needed.
Mm-hmm.
Which is good.
Okay, great, so.
Brilliant.
And if he uses more hours and we can, we can always, because this is cable access money, this is not tax dollars, at this time we can then appropriate a larger time slot for next year-
Right.
Using cable access.
Yep.
Right. So, great, okay, that's done. Next item is, um, fishing derby restrictions for the boat ramp?
Yes, so I'm gonna say skip, now skip, because I don't know, is Carl his first name?
Yes.
Carl, okay, thank you. Came to me and wa- had noted that during fishing events and in general down at the, um, the pond, the people are power-loading their boats, which is scrubbing out the subsurface at the base of the ramp, which is creating a drop. So, the people are backing in, their trailers are dropping, their vehicles are dropping into the lake because of the, um, degradation of the, of the, uh, base of the ramp. So what he had suggested, basically, firstly, informing that, that it's illegal to, uh, power-load your boat onto your trailer, um, in Massachusetts, because it undermines the ramp and digs big holes in the lake bottom at the ramp's edge. And this, this is an email from him, because power-loading seems to be the practice of many, not all fishermen, it may help to reduce the practice if the tournament organizers are asked or required to police the ramp as a requirement or condition of the permit that they seek from the town court field to have a tournament. And he said that he expects that many fishermen don't even realize that power-loading can be a problem or that it's actually illegal. And the tournament organizers may just have to let them know that to, to prevent it. So he suggested the following language be added to fishing derbies for the town as a permanent restriction, that you must inform all participants that power-loading your boat onto the trailer is not allowed and is illegal in Massachusetts. Um, so that is basically what this is about and he would like to ask that you please move to add that language as a permanent restriction to, uh, fishing derbies.
Do we know, is that a true statement, that power-loading is illegal in Massachusetts?
I do not know if that is a true statement, I did not research that.
Okay.
What was that again, please?
That power-loading is, is power-loading legitimately illegal in Massachusetts?
Yes, it is, it's actually posted at the boat ramp.
Okay.
Uh, it's part of the, um, fish and wildlife boat access requirements.
Okay.
Uh, so it is, it is on their side, so that, that would be in compliance with, uh-
Yeah.
So I think we can put it right up there with no literate, please police the area after you, I think the only current statement we have on our permits is to police your trash after the event.
Yes, for ice fishing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
But what happened to any permits that have already been-
Issued.
Issued? It wouldn't apply to that?
Well, if it's actually, if it's actually-
Well, I mean, it does, cause it's on the sign.
If it's actually on the sign at the boat ramp, I find it a little frustrating that we even have to go through this, but it's an additional reminder to the organizers to police their people.
Yeah, I mean, and I think that's, I don't think that's a problem.
I don't think that's an unreasonable request at all.
No, no.
So, um, I think it's a reasonable request, um, however, you're, that's only reaching those that are requesting a special use permit. Uh, there are more and more larger boats, which are harder to float than the bass boats that are there every day, so it really requires water access, uh, to step up and ensure that the people that are using the state boat and following their very own regulations, so.
So, so you're recommending we contact the state and warn them that this is happening?
Uh, and to be honest with you, they've been down there twice this year, which is the first time I've seen that happen, um, uh, in quite some time. Normally, they might show up and sit in their truck. This year, they actually did, uh, monitoring of, of boaters. Uh, at one Sunday morning, there were probably a dozen boats waiting to be launched as, as they inspected them.
Hmm.
And I think that's a, that's great. Uh, and yeah, it's a state boat ramp and they should monitor their own, their own, uh, ramp, so.
So, I think it's-
I wonder how many ramps are actually usable at the state in the drought as well?
Ooh.
And if that is, like, if it is one of the few that's maybe still usable, that it's just, the extra traffic is just gonna cause extra damage?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
It just, if it's, if that's one of the few ramps maybe still usable because of the drought conditions around here? If the extra traffic-
That's why we're seeing bigger boats.
Yeah, that's why we're maybe seeing bigger boats, which will then cause additional damage, which it just kinda escalates.
Stell Park is getting some very big boats, uh, there was a, probably a twenty-four footer out there the other day and it made me think that they could get it off the trailer.
Wow.
Probably they could get it off the trailer because they've scoured the end of the ramp, so.
Oh, dear.
So it does drop off.
Yeah.
But, uh, that jet ski, send it, really, really, they have to power run almost from jet ski.
Yep.
Right. Okay. Alright, so I think we can add that verbiage, do we need a vote to add it or is the discussion sufficient?
You, you should actually vote to add that to, to all derby, um, applications going forward.
I'll make a mo- uh, motion that we add the verbiage as read and according to the sign that's posted at the ramp, that we add that to all applications for, uh, special use permits.
Yeah, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, next one is, um, signing the state primary warrant? Are, are we just ratifying the signatures on that? Karen?
I'm, I'm, uh, Adam didn't sign, that's why I'm just putting on the agenda.
Ah, okay.
We're waiting for Adam to sign.
Okay, so, can I get a motion to sign the, uh, state primary warrant?
I'll make a motion that I sign the state primary warrant.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the next item is, uh, signed cemetery deeds. We've got, um, uh, lot thirteen C, uh, lot thirty-one, section E, lot fifteen, section E, um, of Brookfield Cemetery. So can we get a motion to, uh, sign the three cemetery deeds?
I'll make a motion that we sign the three cemetery deeds as read.
Right, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, it took me a minute to find this, but anyway, uh, here are the boat regulations, the state boat regulations and rule number, uh, nineteen. Load or unload powered watercraft onto or off a powered boat trailer by means of propeller systems is a violation of posted management measures.
Oh, now I know what that is. I didn't know what power-loading was until you read that description by using the propellers. Thank you.
That's what I get for assuming, but for once I was right. Okay. So, um, can I get a motion to delegate authority to, um, Kelly, the town administrator, to sign con- any contracts previously discussed by the, by the board?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, delegate authority to town administrator Kelly A. Robbins to sign contracts as previously, or disguise, to sign contracts previously discussed by the board.
I'll second it, and just for conversation, so fundamentally, anything that we've discussed and at least voted in the affirmative, e- even if we don't have the paperwork in front of us, so long as the contract is in line with what the intent of the vote was.
Yes, those are the ones, um, for instance, the CDBG grant for Green Street has been discussed repeatedly at meetings and we applied for the grant and now it's a matter of following through on going out, doing the RFQ, going out to bid, making sure that, you know, things are-
In line with what they-
In line with what, what the project is.
Right.
Rather than having them wait, so for instance, if this meeting had been canceled, we don't have one next week or the week after or the week after, so it'd be four weeks before you can sign the contract. This will just alleviate that time gap.
That type of time gap, yeah, mhm. So, so that we can actually do business in the town.
In a timely manner.
In a timely manner?
Yes.
Outstanding, alright.
Uh, do we need to vote?
We do, so we did the motion and the second, I doubt, I did the conversation actually where it belonged after the motion for a change, sorry, was trying to get it procedurally right, so. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so let's go ahead and, um, we've got the CDBG FY twenty-one CDF invoice, uh, which is, um, bottom line total of five thousand six hundred fifty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents for, um, waiver relative to, this one was the-
This is the Green Street project.
Green Street project, yeah. Alright, can I get a motion to, uh, sign that?
Yep, I'll make a motion that we sign, uh, the CDBG FY twenty-one program invoice.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then we have, looks like we're making some traction on minutes. So we've got the select board minutes of six fourteen, uh, seven five, six two and seven twenty-seven.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we approve those select board minutes, uh, as were read and are noted.
Alright, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we've got, um, the electric contract offering. Kelly, you were gonna kinda take a point on that.
In, in light of what's going on with, um, energy and, uh, fuel supply chains, thought it would be a good idea to lock in a price for the town's energy use, so electricity and natural gas. Uh, working with a broker from Yolon Energy and he went out to bid on behalf of, of Brookfield. They came back with a three-year contract to begin in February because we needed to loop the school and to get the lower rate because of their usage and they're in a contract that expires in February.
Okay.
So it'll start in February, it'll be thirty-six months and it will be point one six four oh seven cents per kilowatt hour. We currently pay approximately ten cents a kilowatt hour.
Yeah.
It's anticipated at this time that it will go up to twenty-five cents. So we're rolling the dice on the next six months-
Okay.
Before the contract will take effect. I would like to lock the price in just because between the time they gave me the original, they're like, well, you can sign it, I said, no, I'm not signing this, this is for the selectmen to sign, they need to hear about this and discuss it and they need to be on board with this. Well, the rates are gonna change, you gotta sign it right now. I said, I, I'm aware the rates are gonna change and the answer is still no.
No.
So they re-quoted today. They will hold the quote until tomorrow morning if you're willing to accept the sixteen cents. It was twelve cents when they sent it to me before. So every day we wait is, is, it goes up.
It goes up.
Is it, is gonna be an issue. Um, the national, natural gas energy, they're, uh, they gave us fifty-four cents for, what the heck is the term? I have to think of the term that he used, should be in my, my paperwork somewhere, that I actually just brought out here. Um, that was, that's, I think that's a typo, but they put it in a contract.
Fifty-four cents?
Fifty-four cents.
That's-
So, uh-
I feel like it was supposed to be five dollars and forty cents.
Four, I, the term, give me a second, I gotta find the terminology.
Okay, that's crazy.
I just had it a second ago. One moment, please. I probably stuck it in the back of the wrong folder because I thought I had it with me in my hand and I didn't, aha, here we are. Per therm, fifty-four cents per therm. This is the way it's measured.
Okay.
Yeah. But it's a crazy low, a low price and I'm not a scientist and cannot explain what therm is. Um, I can get it in writing and send it to you if that's alright. But I think that that is an absolute, uh, must, those- But I think that that is an absolute uh must. Those, those prices haven't been that low for probably two or three years.
Okay.
So if you would.
Oh, it's a, okay. It's a unit of heat equivalent to one hundred thousand BTU.
Thanks, I still don't know what that means, but.
Approximately the energy content of a hundred cubic feet. No idea.
Still don't know.
So they know, they take all of the gas bills and they see what you're using for energy and then they do the math and give you a price based on the terms that you used.
Right.
Yeah, how much energy it took to heat a hundred cubic feet.
Right.
Yeah.
So this, this is, this is a crazy low price.
Fifty-four cents to heat a hundred cubic feet.
Okay.
If I adjusted that correctly.
Uh yes, I believe that is exactly what that means. So I would recommend that you uh approve the both energy contracts. The one for the gas and for the electricity and even though we'll be paying. I don't know what we'll be paying up to February because with winter coming, it could skyrocket, but at least it'll be completely done for three years.
That is one good thing, is that you know what it's always gonna, like personally, I never lock into anything just because, I guess I kinda.
You like to gamble.
To play, yeah, to roll the dice on it, but.
Yeah, I don't buy scratch tickets either because I can't, I just can't do it. I go, no, I need to know.
But it is a lot easier to plan and budget when you know exactly.
Yeah.
Right.
How much you're going to pay over.
And, and then fundamentally, if we, if we have a set price for what it's gonna cost us, then we can look at, at conservation measures. Cause I look up here and I don't think those are LEDs.
We can look at conservation measures and, and, and that's definitely um a good step. I think our very first conservation measure should be insulation for this building. There's zero insulation. You walk up into the attic and it's nothing but rafters and roof.
Yep.
There's nothing in the roof of this.
I wonder if, see I know National Grid through Mass Safe, they do the stuff for homes. They also do them for business.
Came back. I, I told them, they, they came in and they said, we wanna do LEDs and I said, LEDs are not the problem today. We need insulation because we need to contain the energy that we're using.
Yep.
Talk to me about insulation. Okay, they went up in the attic, they did measurements, never heard from them again.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do we, can we get somebody in prior to winter to see how much it would cost to do the, the?
We could, but we don't necessarily have any funding for a project of that nature. I'm not sure if the town improvement company uh committee is prepared to. Be waylaid, be waylaid and sacrifice the budget for this uh because it was never mentioned to anyone.
Yeah.
But I agree that we do need to make energy conservation. Um I was actually had Kathy looking for grants. Of some nature and even the Green Community Grants won't let you put insulation in with their money. They just want you to do lighting. They don't want electricity. They want you switching over to non-fossil fuels regardless of the cost.
Yep.
And, and you know, I've, I've dealt with that program in three different towns and it's never seemed to die.
No.
Well, I guess my question is, can we get a quote so we at least know how much it is so that if nothing else we.
Well, we know how much it is today, but our budget isn't for another year, so what's it gonna, we, we'd be better off to find out how much it would be closer to budget time. You see what I'm saying? Because the way things are, the economy is, the price today may not be valid in three months or four months or.
It may be valid.
Definitely won't be valid by the time the town meeting and we can't expect a company to lock in that price at this time. So, but that's another subject. So this is just like basically, do you want these, to take these energy um savings or?
I think for the sake of predictability.
Yeah, I'm unfamiliar with natural gas prices as I don't use natural gas.
It's all very cyclic.
It is.
Yeah, but.
It's all very cyclic and, and we had the same, we, we had the same question.
Showing you what it's doing in Europe and what it's doing here.
Yeah, I know it's going crazy.
And how they track each other and then it, it shows you by season and year over the last three years how it's gone and it's gone like this.
Pretty much gone straight up.
Yeah, it does a great steps.
Like that, so.
The, the un, in particular and the challenges, right, is that natural gas is one of the things we do well. But with the Russians being all kinda crazy.
So do we lock it in because we might not, the prices might be crazy because of supply and demand. Our, our supply is going overseas. So do we lock in the price?
Right. And where, where do we stand right now on the cost of our energy that comes from the solar farm? Like where does that fit? Is it roughly in the same category as how much they're asking for us for this?
So the way it works is our supplier, we, we would still be paying for the energy from the solar fields. Those credits that we're buying are then applied to the electric bill, but it would be applied at the new rate. As opposed to what the rate will be in February. So the credits are still gonna come off.
Just at a different rate.
Just at a, at a different.
You're gonna come out at the rate that we're, of what we're paying for energy.
Right, that, well, that. Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright. So, so unit for unit, we're still, it's still, it works the same way?
It works exactly the same way.
I, I don't know how we say no fundamentally, cause if nothing else, the uncertainty factor is just, is just abysmal. I mean, two years from now, if for some reason all of a sudden there's a glut on the energy market, we'll probably regret it, but hind, you know hindsight's always twenty-twenty.
Yeah, it just, it makes planning easier.
Yeah, any comments from the attendees, all two of you?
I mean, what's gonna go down?
Well, I, well, the, the, the only reason why I'm hesitant. The only reason why I'm hesitant is the last time we signed a three-year contract, for whatever reason, magic happened. And the energy market ac- absolutely bottomed out and we wound up paying two to three X what the market rate was for two out of the three years. So the only reason I'm hesitant, even though I don't think that would be the case this time, is the fact that historically, you know. You know what, we're gonna sign this because if there's any way to bring the, the energy prices down for the citizens of Brookfield.
This might do it.
This might do it.
And keep in mind that this does not take effect until February, until the school's um contract is over.
Right, and they're on board with it.
Then the natural gas will take fa- uh will take effect in September. We pay their energy bill. So regardless, even in their contract they're in now, we pay their energy bill.
Right. For the elementary school.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah. They're part of a, a group um purchase for the school district, but we pay the bill. Which we didn't even know they were part of, even though it's our school and we pay the bill. This was discovered during the research for this.
Is that gonna, are, are they on board with swapping from their buying unit to our buying unit? Or do they not have a choice since we pay the bill?
They, they don't actually have an option in this and, and when we spoke with the um facilities manager for the district. It doesn't impact their buying because we pay their bill.
Okay.
So even though the district got the benefit of the rate, it didn't get reflected on Brookfield's bill because we pay the bill. So, no, 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 we're gonna take them back and use them to get a better rate for, for the rest of the town.
Got it, okay, sounds like a plan.
So, um in, in previous investigations into this building. The architects have indicated that these, the type of structure of this wall, this brick wall. Is not conducive to providing insulation. So when they do insulation calculations, they do what they call a heat loss study. And through a wall is one calculation, through a window is another. Windows typically are your biggest energy hog and the ceiling or the roof is another calculation. I agree that we certainly should be insulating. The only good thing about the ceiling in this building is that it's three stories up. And it's basically closed off, so there's not a lot of heat that makes it up there. I think this, I think this roof structure is the only thing that could be insulated, other than the windows.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I agree with you completely, yeah.
But, uh so the windows are a big energy hog. And we have talked about on the committee going around in the fall and making sure that the windows are closed and locked. And the strong windows are down. I mean, that's typically what you do at home, certainly what we have to do here. It's a, it's a minor way of saving, but it absolutely is necessary.
Oh, I, I agree completely, but if we're to ever be able to refinish the upstairs at some point and use the upstairs. Which we're making strides toward doing, we need to be able to retain the heat up there as well. So I think insulating the roof is, is paramount to that process.
Also have huge windows up there.
Yes, they do. That, that big room has some big old windows, doesn't it?
It does.
Replace those. Be a fortune to replace it.
It would be.
Windows, that's us.
Alright, can we get a motion then to accept the con, uh energy contracts?
I'll make a motion that we accept the energy contracts.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, alright, we've got two items of correspondence.
Excuse me, can I go, I wanna go back and visit the, the uh announcements that you made about committees?
Yes.
Was there an announcement about? The master plan committee?
No.
Is there a master plan committee? I thought that.
No.
I thought that was voted on as the town meeting. On the new master plan, but that has some legal ramifications.
Okay, so if I may, the master plan is updated under the law by the planning board. Um I've been working with the planning board. They, they asked and, and delegated to me to seek quotes on updating the master plan. Which we have and so it's in the process of, of um getting beyond just the quote.
So. I, I thought that there was.
And the quote came in within our budget, so I don't see any reason why we wouldn't be able to proceed, so it's, it's. I let the planning board know um that that was where we were at and.
So there's a plan to update the plan.
It was discussed at their meeting, their last meeting.
Excellent.
So, I'm work, I'm working on it.
Cause the master plan is like twelve years old or whatever.
Something to that effect, yes.
And it's a prerequisite for a lot of the grants that we wanna pursue, so we are pursuing it.
It's, it's in motion. It's in, and the hazard mitigation plan is also being updated at the same time. We're looking at a grant to get that completed because it expires next year, so it should be updated prior to its expiration.
Boy, this is why we got a town in this.
Isn't that cool? Look how fancy that is. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, um alright, so correspondence. We have a letter from Charter Communications regarding programming changes. So Spectrum LLC, Northeast LLC, Spectrum has been informed that on or around September first. TVG located on Spectrum channels three twenty and eight forty-two will rebrand as Fan Dual TV. And TVG two located on Spectrum channel three twenty-seven will rebrand to Fan Dual Racing. To review the current lineup, go to spectrum.com backslash channels. If you have any questions, please call John Maher. At charter.com seven seven four two four three nine seven three five. And then uh we are invited to the one hundredth birthday of East Brookfield. Um which they um suspended um five years of planned events back in twenty twenty. So they're going to be doing their hundredth anniversary a couple of years late, uh which is September seventeenth with a parade at nine thirty. Pardon me. Um our board is welcome to join their parade and either walk or ride and carry a sign for the town of Brookfield.
It's Saturday.
Yeah, do you have any interest in representing Brookfield in the East Brookfield celebration? I think they were seceding. I don't know if we really wanna celebrate that.
Yeah.
They did succeed.
They did succeed.
They did succeed. They successfully succeed.
Yeah.
Seceded, you can't even say it.
All the other Brookfields succeeded.
Yes, all the other Brookfields succeeded, so.
That's why I always get asked.
I think we can revisit. I don't know that, I have a, a huge urge, but if we talk about it outside here and decide that we have to support.
I was gonna be there on the sidewalk.
You should be there in the parade.
So you need to be there in the parade.
Represent.
Last time I was in a parade, I had to wear a tux.
Even, even though they succeeded. We have a sisterhood with that town.
We do, we do, you know, that's true.
Each other and we work together and we need each other. So there's absolutely nothing wrong with supporting their anniversary.
No, there's, there's not. I was trying to be funny. So do, do we wanna go ahead and march along?
Sure, we can ride in a car.
We can ride in a car.
Anybody have a fancy car?
I have a convertible.
Ooh.
Uh let me rephrase that. I have access to a convertible.
Access to a convertible.
You guys could ride behind like this.
I just have a pickup.
Right?
And it smells like horse.
That would be awesome. We all could ride in the back.
We could ride in the back.
Holding a big banner that says Black Sabbath. No, wait, it says Brookfield, Town of Brookfield.
Motley Crue.
Motley Crue supports East Brookfield. Happy anniversary. Um but yeah, I think, I think that, actually think that it would be.
Kinda cool.
It would be very, very um.
Actually, a trailer.
It would, it would be really nice if, if it was supported.
Actually, you know what, I, I wonder, I wonder if the fire chief would let us borrow the brush truck.
You need a special license.
No, you don't. It's small. It's like, it's like a, it's a one-ton pickup. It's like a, yeah, it, it doesn't require a commercial driver's license. That's why I was thinking that. So, so yeah, maybe we'll, maybe we'll come up with a, a Brookfield town.
Here we go.
That we can, that we can.
We'll do a float.
Yeah.
Or you can use the water truck because the water truck is, works very closely with East Brookfield.
Oh, that's actually not a bad idea.
We're actually uh just sending out a letter today uh for a regional water commission meeting. With East Brookfield, North Brookfield and West Brookfield here in Brookfield, which is our fourth regional meeting to try to. Share common interests and understand the burdens of running that system. We all do the same thing, maybe a little differently, but.
Right.
You need to keep those staff small, small systems working together.
It's very important that we, that we.
So in spite of me, you, you brought me around full circle. Do any of the other department heads wanna support the parade?
That's a good question. They were invited, but we can ask.
Oh, it does say honorable board of selectmen.
It does say honorable board of selectmen, that's correct.
So, I guess we could ask Larry Gordon if, you know, it, 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 do they really want just the selectmen or do they want anything else? Since we've at the water.
Well, Litter isn't here, appoint her a car.
So, um but we'll, we'll represent, we'll decide, tell, let them know that we're, it, probably they'll get at least two of us. And we don't know whether we're gonna be walking or driving.
Nice.
But.
Well done.
Well, we can, we can consider that. Ooh, I was supposed to, I was actually supposed to be out of state that weekend. Are, are you gonna be here?
I'll, yeah, I'll have just gotten back from my business trip.
Okay. Alright.
So I'll be a little time groggy, but.
You'll be time groggy, okay. Alright, and I haven't bought my ticket.
Follow the crowd.
And I haven't bought, and I haven't, I haven't bought my ticket yet, so I may, I may adjust. I will try to be there. But I need to see if I can get coverage, so, okay. So we'll figure it out. Then maybe we'll do your convertible. If you're, if you're willing to drive, then we can.
Unfortunately, my family's doing a golf tournament benefit that day, so I will be, you know, doing roulette wheels selling.
Okay, so we will find.
Chances to hit a marshmallow from the eighteen.
I got a pickup.
You've got a pickup?
I got access to a pickup.
You have access to a pickup? We could ask Peter Mazuzo if, if.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't realize what the date was, so.
Yeah, okay. So let them know we'll support. We don't know how many or whether we're walking or driving. Yeah, okay. So let them know we'll support. We don't know how many or whether we're walking or driving, but we'll figure it out.
I'll call Joe.
So. Alright, anything else? There's nothing else in the packet, so can I get a, a motion to adjourn at seven twenty-five?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven twenty-five.
Say, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.